Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, November 12th, 2002. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. And meetings are open to the public. We invite you to join us and participate in our proceedings. For those of you unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. I must say this morning, however, that on occasion we do meet at a special time other than 10:00 a.m. and sometimes at special locations other than City Hall. So let me take this opportunity to announce that the meeting of the City Council for tomorrow, November 13th, will not be at 10:00 a.m. It will be at 6:00 p.m. at Mission College in Silmar in the northeast San Fernando Valley. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, November 12th, 2002. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. And meetings are open to the public. We invite you to join us and participate in our proceedings. For those of you unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. I must say this morning, however, that on occasion we do meet at a special time other than 10:00 a.m. and sometimes at special locations other than City Hall. So let me take this opportunity to announce that the meeting of the City Council for tomorrow, November 13th, will not be at 10:00 a.m. It will be at 6:00 p.m. at Mission College in Silmar in the northeast San Fernando Valley. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, November 12th, 2002. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. And meetings are open to the public. We invite you to join us and participate in our proceedings. For those of you unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. I must say this morning, however, that on occasion we do meet at a special time other than 10:00 a.m. and sometimes at special locations other than City Hall. So let me take this opportunity to announce that the meeting of the City Council for tomorrow, November 13th, will not be at 10:00 a.m. It will be at 6:00 p.m. at Mission College in Silmar in the northeast San Fernando Valley. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, November 12th, 2002. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. And meetings are open to the public. We invite you to join us and participate in our proceedings. For those of you unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. I must say this morning, however, that on occasion we do meet at a special time other than 10:00 a.m. and sometimes at special locations other than City Hall. So let me take this opportunity to announce that the meeting of the City Council for tomorrow, November 13th, will not be at 10:00 a.m. It will be at 6:00 p.m. at Mission College in Silmar in the northeast San Fernando Valley. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, November 12th, 2002. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. And meetings are open to the public. We invite you to join us and participate in our proceedings. For those of you unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. I must say this morning, however, that on occasion we do meet at a special time other than 10:00 a.m. and sometimes at special locations other than City Hall. So let me take this opportunity to announce that the meeting of the City Council for tomorrow, November 13th, will not be at 10:00 a.m. It will be at 6:00 p.m. at Mission College in Silmar in the northeast San Fernando Valley. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, November 12th, 2002. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. And meetings are open to the public. We invite you to join us and participate in our proceedings. For those of you unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. I must say this morning, however, that on occasion we do meet at a special time other than 10:00 a.m. and sometimes at special locations other than City Hall. So let me take this opportunity to announce that the meeting of the City Council for tomorrow, November 13th, will not be at 10:00 a.m. It will be at 6:00 p.m. at Mission College in Silmar in the northeast San Fernando Valley. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, November 12th, 2002. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. And meetings are open to the public. We invite you to join us and participate in our proceedings. For those of you unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. I must say this morning, however, that on occasion we do meet at a special time other than 10:00 a.m. and sometimes at special locations other than City Hall. So let me take this opportunity to announce that the meeting of the City Council for tomorrow, November 13th, will not be at 10:00 a.m. It will be at 6:00 p.m. at Mission College in Silmar in the northeast San Fernando Valley. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, November 12th, 2002. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. And meetings are open to the public. We invite you to join us and participate in our proceedings. For those of you unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. I must say this morning, however, that on occasion we do meet at a special time other than 10:00 a.m. and sometimes at special locations other than City Hall. So let me take this opportunity to announce that the meeting of the City Council for tomorrow, November 13th, will not be at 10:00 a.m. It will be at 6:00 p.m. at Mission College in Silmar in the northeast San Fernando Valley. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Good morning, everyone. We have to deal with the ability to provide within this region, the five-county, six-county region, in the next 20 years, 55 million additional passengers and the capacity to handle them. And with the cap at LAX at 78, it's going to be difficult. You're going to have, we have the Orange County situation, which we don't know what the final outcome is going to be, but it's going to be really, the ball is in your hands on how to deal with this problem. SCAG has initiated an aviation task force, and we're, our process is planning, but your process is going to be implementation. So you've got a tough row ahead of you. I wish you luck, and if I can be of any assistance in that goal, please don't hesitate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gentlemen, good morning. The transportation access is a major concern I have, and there is a 105 freeway, and there's a Y where it smoothes down to El Segundo, and it stops abruptly, does not go into L.A. International Airport. And if it would go into L.A. International Airport, many people from the east part of the city and the county that travel to L.A. International Airport wouldn't have to take the 105 freeway and find parking. They'd be able to get on that Green Line and take that Green Line right into LAX. And I don't know if it's on the map for completion or not, but hopefully, once you're confirmed, you'll look into that, to have an access, a light rail system, the Green Line, which the spur is there, but they never completed construction into L.A. International Airport. And I took one of my deputies down to the Green Line recently and dropped him off, and I looked up there, and I saw it, and it seems common sense would tell you, let's continue this into LAX and take all those people who want to travel by air, get them in there, avoid the transportation gridlock and the chaos that exists on the 105 freeway. So I would ask that, once you're confirmed, you look into that to see what it would take to complete that short access where that Y stops, continues to El Segundo, but doesn't continue into Los Angeles International Airport, which it should for the convenience and the access and the ability of our people that utilize that facility. So I wish you success, but something you can put on your map to try and help all those folks that have to fight the gridlock many, many days. Thank you.
Ms. Sikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was able to join the Energy and Commerce Committee, Natural Resources Committee for the hearing Thursday night, and it was a very impressive hearing. As I think you've already heard, there were about 25 to 30 community people there who, as they testified, registered legitimate concerns, asked questions of the commissioners through the committee members, who then in turn asked the commission appointees what their views were with regard to separate matters, and several of them. And I think that the member, the two appointees, really answered those questions thoughtfully. It was a very, very impressive interchange between the appointees and the committee members and the community. And I think it sets well the stage, particularly for these two appointees, to carry through on that charge. And as I said to them privately, I think Mr. Lorenz, as the community member, and Mr. Weil, with his background in planning, both as a BZA member, looking at adjudicating cases, and then as a member of the City Planning Commission, really has a sense of planning issues and how critical it is that any future planning effort be integrated and mitigated within a community. And I think that there is a crying need, a desperate need, at the Airport Commission for not just the one community member, which has now been required by the Charter, but by a number of the commissioners, in fact, the entire commission, but in part to elevate the concerns of the community to a special concern by way of maybe creating a subcommittee of the Airport Commission to meet regularly, to allow the actions at the Commission and the actions at the Los Angeles World Airport to be transparent to the community, so the community doesn't just have something thrust upon them, but that they have had a real ability to have interchange, not in a formal setting of a hearing, but in informal meetings, informal, ongoing settings where they are aware of, able to ask questions, able to understand how and why the commission and airport staff might make a recommendation, having fully looked into all of the alternatives that the community might put forward. In any case, I thought the hearing was good. I was fully supportive of these two nominees and strongly recommend approval of the committee recommendation to approve their nomination.
Thank you, Ms. Sikowski. Other members wishing to be heard on the appointment of these two commissioners? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations. You are both confirmed. Thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you.
Fourth whis, please. Next item.
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearings. Items 1, 2, and 3 are hearings against proposed improvement, maintenance of street lighting districts. Council should open the hearings and continue the hearings and ordinance to December 10th.
Public hearings on items 1, 2, and 3 are now open. I have not received requests from members of the public to address the council on these items, so without further discussion, the public hearing shall be continued, and these ordinances carry over to December 10th, three weeks from now. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item number four is also a public hearing item. It's relative to the Greater Limerick Park Crenshaw Corridor Property and Business Improvement District, and the second hearing on this will be held on December 17th.
Okay. Once again, seeing no requests from members of the public to address the council on these items, public hearings open. Members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, the second hearing shall be held. Madam Clerk.
Item number five is also a public hearing item. It's a communication from the City Attorney and Ordinance relative to property acquisition for Boyle Heights Youth Technical Center, and that's continued from November 6th.
Okay. Item number five now before us. Once again, I have no requests from members of the public to address the council on this item. Public hearings shall be open and closed. Members wishing to be heard on item number five? Anybody wishing to call that special? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items 6 through 18.
Item 6 through 18 now before us. Public hearings haven't been held in committee. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Members wishing to call any specials? Mr. Reyes.
Yes, Council President, I'd like to continue items 7 through 10 for one week, please.
Okay. Members, we have motioned to continue items 7 through 10. Is there any objection to that? Seeing none, items 7 through 10 are continued for one week, the new date being November 19th. Let me also announce for the record, Mr. Wade Hunter, I know you're here on items 7 through 10. As you just heard, these matters are being continued for one week, so we thank you for being here and invite you back in a week. Ms. Hahn.
Yes, I'd like to call item 11 special.
Item 11 called special by Ms. Hahn. Any other specials on items 6 and 12 through 18? Mr. Weiss.
15, Mr. President.
15 called special by Mr. Weiss. Other specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those matters are approved. Next item, please.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 19 through 29.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. We shall deem the public hearing satisfied and without objection consider these matters today. Members wishing to call any specials? Items 19 through 29? Mr. Weiss.
21.
Item 21 called special by Mr. Weiss. Any other specials? Mr. Reyes.
I'd like to receive and file item 25I and item 26.
Motions, members, to receive and file item 25I and item 26 by Mr. Reyes. Seeing no objection, those matters are received and filed. Any other specials? Any other motions on these items? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those matters are approved. Next item, please.
On the supplemental agenda, items for which public hearings have been held, item 32.
Item 32 now before us. Public hearing haven't been held on item 32. Motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearing. Seeing no such motion, any member wishing to call this matter special? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 32. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Item 32 is approved. Next item, please.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 33 through 34.
33 and 34 now before us. Seeing no requests from members of the public to address the council on these items, we shall deem the public hearing satisfied. Members wishing to call item 33 or 34 special? 33 called special by Ms. Sikowski. Any members wishing to call item 34 special? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 34. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Going back to the items called special, item number 11 was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn. Item 11.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this item is, will effectively transfer the operations of the Wilmington Senior Center in my district to a nonprofit agency, the Wilmington J.C.'s, under the direction of Gary Kearns. And this is really a great day for the seniors in Wilmington. This, first of all, is a long-awaited senior center, which the seniors have been wanting as long as I can remember. They've been meeting in a very dilapidated old building. Many of them were actually afraid they wouldn't live long enough to see the new senior center, but the city really pushed that up, and we've now got a beautiful building right at Banning Park. It's probably going to be one of the most state-of-the-art senior centers anywhere. And Gary Kearns and the Wilmington J.C.'s had been operating the multipurpose center already in Wilmington and wanted to be the agency that led the seniors into the promised land with the new senior center, and I support that. Gary Kearns has earned the respect of the seniors in Wilmington. He is, in fact, a member of the Wilmington Neighborhood Council, and so this is a great opportunity for us to transfer this to a nonprofit agency who, I believe, will really do a great job in providing the kinds of programs and services that our seniors in Wilmington deserve. So I hope you will support me on this item. Thank you very much.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to congratulate Ms. Hahn because it made such an impression on me at committee when you testified, and I learned about the long history in your community with respect to this issue, and how after, I think you said it was at least eight, if not more years, 10 years, finally, under your tenure, with your leadership, this is going to happen. It just seems like a great thing. So congratulations to you, and congratulations to your community.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Mr. Labanche.
Thank Ms. Hahn on this. On these issues here, I have a senior center in my area that has a similar situation, but this taking it, getting it done, real important, and also working with that outside group, which helps the umbrella, the umbrella that we need to have for people. And our seniors are really those who we should always work long and hard for to provide what they need in the most joyous time in their life, so they don't have those complications. So I salute you, Ms. Hahn, for that. Very good. Invite me to when you open it up, I love coming to Wilmington. Thank you.
Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Item 11 is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 15 called special by Councilmember Weiss.
Mr. Weiss.
Just call me Nate. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this is a very important matter. This has to do with the after-action reports at the, at LAX for the attack on the Fourth of July, and we're going to receive these reports today, and I imagine we'll file them. I hope we don't receive and file this issue because there is so much more that needs to be done at LAX when it comes to security. Now, got to give credit where credit is due. The folks at LAWA have succeeded in putting LAX on a track that very few airports in the country are on, to ensure that there will be 100% screening of all baggage by the December federal deadline. There are going to be a number of airports, I anticipate, in the country that are going to ask for waivers or exemptions somehow or other. So LAX is to be congratulated in that regard, but no one is to be congratulated for the manner in which the attack at LAX on the Fourth of July was terminated. No one, except for Al Al, who terminated the attack. Law enforcement were not able to respond within the 40 seconds that Al Al was able to respond, and that's why that incident ended when it did. There are many difficult questions of law enforcement and unfortunately of politics that we're going to need to grapple with in the coming weeks and months here, but we have to grapple with them because LAX has been on the Al Qaeda target list in the past. We should have no doubt that it remains there, and there is much analysis and work that needs to be done in the coming weeks to ensure that we do our part to make sure that LAX is and remains the safest big airport in the nation. And we are going to have to delve into this issue of which police department is best equipped and best trained to protect the airport. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That report is noted and filed. Next item, please.
Item number 21 called special by Councilmember Weiss.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, recently, the Public Interest Research Group issued a nationwide report on the safety of playgrounds, and they issued a set of parameters for playgrounds throughout the country to adhere to in order to be safe, and it is a more modern, updated set of safety regulations than many playgrounds in the country have. We had a hearing recently in the Arts Health Committee in which the Wreck and Parks Department came in and told us of their plans to retrofit, if you will, playgrounds around the city for safety. There still are playgrounds in the city that need to be brought up to these standards. I should add that they're not, it's not a matter of state code. Our playgrounds are already there, but there's a higher level of standards that I think we ought to expect and require our playgrounds to adhere to. And so they're going to be coming back to committee in the coming months with a plan to try to bring the playgrounds in the city up to code. But it's the sort of thing which you ask yourself, well, why do these, why do these groups, such as Public Interest Research Group, do these reports if all we're going to do is just file them, read the newspaper article, or with the case of most people, probably not even read the newspaper article? What we're going to do in the Arts Health Committee is try to come up with a plan so that the Wreck and Parks Department can address these safety issues and effectively bring all the playgrounds in the city up to this new heightened level of safety. And so we'll be bringing that back in the next months, next series of months to all of you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 21. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 33 called special by Councilmember Ms. Sikowski, and there is an amending motion that has been distributed.
Ms. Sikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is something we, the council, have seen before. This is the authorization for LAPD to submit proposals to the MTA to respond to their request for proposal on providing security along and transit placing services along MTA lines. The submission of this proposal, of a proposal, as the council had outlined per the CLA and the CAO, raising some concerns about those issues that we would have ultimate jurisdiction over deployment, we would have to be insured to have full pay for the process that we would enter. Those things were essential, and the council had required that to be part of the response that we would submit. I think that today, all we need on 33A is the motion just authorizing the LAPD to submit proposals as reflected by the earlier discussions, and that they be amended, this report, to include the instruction that any final agreement, any final contract, is subject to approval by the City Council and the mayor. That's the normal process for something of this magnitude. We just want to make that clear. So we would ask that this go forward with that amendment and have reports back as MTA might ultimately choose to enter into negotiations with either us and/or the sheriff for various portions of either, of all the lines, that we be kept informed and consulted as the negotiation goes forward. But so that's my amendment. I think we've seen this. We are clear with it. The CLA, CAO had recommended the conditions, as well as the mayor's office, as to what needed to be included as we move forward, so I ask for an approval of the amendment and have our staffs move forward on submitting their response to the proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Sikowski. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Mr. Holden.
You authorized submitting this. We authorize submitting this proposal, knowing in advance that MTA is saying that they want certain conditions and certain sign-offs before we can accept the proposal, or even until we can deploy safety personnel under that jurisdiction. They want to act as if they are the controlling authority in this regard. Now, with that being the case, what is the likelihood of MTA rejecting the proposal from the City of Los Angeles as being non-responsive? Someone want to tell me that while you hold my time?
Yes, Bill Fujioka, yes, it is possible that the MTA could reject our proposal. However, the seven points we delineated in our report sent earlier to your council are, let me characterize them, as onerous. There are issues that we cannot accept, and we need to take a very, very strong position. One thing I'll highlight, it said that MT would retain the ability to deploy staff and to decide who would be assigned to this function. That is a, that's a charter mandated responsibility given to, first, our Chief of Police, then our Police Commission, and subsequently this whole council. They cannot, and the mayor's office, they cannot take that ability away from us.
Therefore, you're non-responsive.
I would disagree, in terms of, yes...
Well, you mean, the charter says you cannot be in compliance, you cannot respond to it, because you're prevented by charter that, from doing so. But in terms of what they've written as a requirement, you're non-responsive.
Well, we're challenging that requirement. We're responding to that requirement, questioning the legality, whether or not MTA has the ability to impose that type of restriction on the City of Los Angeles.
They do have the ability. All right, then let's direct it to the President of MTA. Mr. Burnson. Mr. Burnson? What is, what would be the position of MTA regarding this response to the proposal, if it's non-responsive?
I can only tell you that what we're doing now is making a bid. It's going to be up to the MTA management and the board to make a decision on who gets the awards, and I can't predict. I think there are certain things that are negotiable. I think the Sheriff's Department is going to have the same objections to some of these things. And we can't presuppose, Mr. Holden, we can just wait. We can make our bid. There are basically two major bidders, and that's it. And they're going to have to have a contract with somebody, and chances are, it's going to be with LAPD and the LA Sheriff's Department, and the rest of the stuff is negotiable.
And the answer is non-responsive. The fact of the matter is that if I sat on MTA board, I could tell you upright right now, that this, these requirements being requested by MTA are unreasonable, and therefore should not be considered, period. That would be my position if I were there. And that should be the position of the mayor, who's there with his three appointees, and they should be able to persuade at least two other persons. They're asking us of something that's virtually impossible. By charter, we cannot be in compliance or not respond to the RFP as written. Now, next question is, does the county have any clauses within the county charter that prevent the Sheriff's Department from being responsive? You can hold on that, Mr. President.
I'd venture to state that the county would have similar concerns, and the LA Sheriff would have similar concerns.
No, 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 it's in the charter, the county charter.
In the charter itself, when it speaks to the deployment of staff, there is a provision that provides that authority, or assigns that authority solely to the head of the department, who would be, in this instance, the sheriff. The sheriff is not going to give up the simple issue of who, of the deployment of staff, and who he assigns to a specific function, who he places in charge of that function, so on. I cannot see the sheriff giving up that authority.
All right, Ms. Sikowski, and to the other members of the council. We should be requesting from MTA, put them on notice, that we would like to respond to your RFP in total, but we're prevented from doing so by charter and cite the section of the charter, which prevents us from doing that. But to the extent that we can, we are responding to our RFP, number one. And number two, we'd like very much to continue serving MTA in this capacity, providing security. I'd like to offer that as amendment to your motion, have it be so inclusive, and so therefore submitted to MTA.
Well, actually, that is our intent, and that's instruction...
Intent, let's, let's make it legal, let's say, the council. You and you may intend to do a lot of things, but we put it in writing, submit it to them as being part of this RFP response. You like that? Where is it written?
Mr. Holden, in the preamble to our response to the RFP, we specifically delineate those areas where we have concerns, and in those areas where our charter, our city code disagree with the RFP...
Do you state, you state in that delineation...
Mr. Holden, after this response, I'm going to ask you to press your button.
I'm asking, just to cut it short, I'm saying, do you state in that delineation that you cannot respond because?
It's specifically stated, and it does state the code section as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Burnson.
Yeah, I wasn't going to speak again, but I think it's, I think what we're doing, what's been proposed by the Public Safety Committee, is the proper response, as drafted with the department and with the mayor's office. And I think that we will have an opportunity to debate and negotiate things which we can and cannot do. And I think ultimately, we will wind up with a contract. I think if we act too aggressive or too negative to start with, I think where there is a possibility, it could all go to the sheriff's office. And if it did, it does. That's one of those things. We'll just wind up with a twenty million dollar hole in our budget, but we'll have more police on the street, but we'll still have to respond to any calls that come in within our jurisdiction that occur on the trains or on the buses. So that's the situation. So I would suggest that we go in there, be conciliatory, let them know where we stand. I think that's what the proposal does. And I think we go from there. I don't think we need to throw gasoline on the fire right now.
Ms. Sikowski.
I think Mr. Burnson indicated what the facts are here. And Mr. Holden's right, the MTA may say they don't want to deal with us. We're upfront, we told them their proposal is not acceptable in certain ways because of our charter. We have a specific seven-point issue that we need to discuss with them in terms of if they want to move forward. As Mr. Fujioka indicated, the sheriff may do the same. It's up to MTA to choose, it's up to MTA to negotiate or to choose to negotiate, but we're putting forward something that is legally within our framework, under the charter, subject to those conditions that we're putting forward. And as I said, this is just the first round, essentially, of the beginning of that process. We're very clear, we're upfront, we have a preamble, and then specifics, and then we make an offer, and they will either respond or not, and then we will negotiate. And the amendment offers the opportunity for the council to hear what's going on, to understand those points of negotiation, if MTA chooses to deal with us, and ultimately to finally approve the contract with the concurrence of the mayor. So I ask that we move forward with this amendment and this process, and let's see where MTA goes in terms of its response.
Mr. Holden, for a second time.
President, to me, I'm going to be suspicious. The MTA staff is, they're not dumb, otherwise they wouldn't be there, that they wrote this RFP, knowing clearly in advance that we would not be totally responsive to the conditions set forth in RFP, because of our charter. And so therefore, they're saying, you can respond, but because of your charter, this is silent, you're silent on this issue, but you really can't respond. And the authority with the county rests totally with the sheriff himself, which means that the sheriff can respond, which generates, creates a twenty million dollar deficit in our budget, which is a problem for us. I would say to you that, Mr. Burnson, you can tip your toe with this, and maybe that's two ways to skin a cat. And I don't want to, I'm not cruel to animals. The fact of the matter is that, well, that's just an old saying, I love animals. But the fact of the matter is that, I personally, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to become a real thorn in the side of the board over there, because what they've been doing here is unfair. How can they sit there, four votes, and let an RFP be written like that? I don't understand it, knowing darn well that we cannot be responsive. We're prohibited by law from being responsive to this RFP, and being denied an opportunity to participate. And we went on the line and gave them that protection early on. It is totally unfair, and they should hear about it, all of the board members, from all of us. And I'm not, you can't be nice over there and think you're going to get some consideration. Slam them. The worst they can do is say no, and they already say no in RFP.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item thirty-three, as amended. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
This is the time for comments from the public on the items not on council's agenda.
And having no requests from members of the public to address the council on non-agenda items, the public comment period for today's meeting is closed. Next item.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There's an excuse on the desk. Council Member Galanter requests to be excused for city business Tuesday, November nineteenth, and Wednesday, November twentieth. A motion is required.
Mr. Reyes moves. Ms. Galanter is excused.
And that clears the desk.
Members, are there any announcements today? Any announcements? If not, let me once again remind the public watching at home that the meeting of the council tomorrow will not take place at its regular time and place in lieu of our 10:00 AM meeting in council chambers for tomorrow, November thirteenth, two thousand and two. The city council will meet at 6:00 PM at Mission College in Silmar, in the San Fernando Valley. We hope to see you there. Mr. Labach for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yesterday, Council Member Grue, Councilmember Zine, and myself, along with the governor and several dignitaries from the military, joined at Forest Lawn for the Veterans Day affair. And this week is a salute all veterans, not just yesterday, but all week long, throughout in activities throughout the city, and the county and the state. So I just wanted to again recognize the veterans who are here, Mr. Holden and Mr. Burnson, and those who served our country, the men and women of the armed forces of the United States. All week long, we salute the veterans throughout California.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. We adjourned last week, the week before, in honor of Wade Piston, and I was going to make an announcement on where his mass and memorial service will be. It will be this Thursday, November fourteenth, and it will be at 9:30 AM in our own Cathedral of Our Lady of the Angels, downtown 555 West Temple. So anyone that would like to participate in that, we hope you'll come.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Other announcements? Mr. Reyes.
Council President, more of an observation, dealing with the veterans. I was hearing a report that, in these months, the veterans of World War II, hundreds are passing away because of that generation. And I just wanted to bring that to light. All the veterans have given the ultimate sacrifice, but the World War II veterans indeed changed the course of history, given the position of the Axis powers at that time. And they are in their twilight years, and because of the period in time in which we find our life cycles, hundreds are passing away in these months. And I just want to acknowledge that, and the supreme sacrifice they gave, and how they changed the history of our world.
Mr. Zine for an announcement?
Along those same lines with the veterans, Supervisor Antonovich, yesterday, read a proclamation from the President, President Bush, regarding veterans, declaring it Veterans Week throughout the country. And I just want to recognize our statesman and our true veteran, Councilmember Nate Holden, who spent his years in the military protecting the people of America. I know Councilman Burnson also, but I think Councilmember Labach forgot Councilmember Holden in the comments.
No, I didn't mention it first. Oh, you did? I'll mention it first.
Other announcements?
Also, Mr. Padilla, I just wanted to mention, too, 10% of all veterans of the United States live in California, which is a very large number, and many of them live in Southern California. It's a very large number of veterans throughout in the service to our country.
Thank you. Other announcements? Adjourning motions? Members of the public, please rise for adjourning motions. City staff near the back, if we can have your attention and silence, please. Mr. Burnson.
Yes, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Philip Harry Die, owner and director of Pinecrest Schools, who died Sunday in Mission Hills. He was seventy-two years of age. Starting in 1951, Pinecrest Schools had grown to eleven private schools located throughout the San Fernando Valley, Santa Clarita, and Antelope Valleys, as well as Ventura County. He and his brother started their career in education with his mother and founder of Pinecrest Schools, Edna Mae Die, an elementary school teacher at the first campus in Van Nuys. Die opened and administered his second campus in Northridge, 1958, and had been an active member of the Board of Directors, 1958 to 2000. I might add that my children attended Pinecrest also in elementary school. He survived by his wife Betty, three children, Philip, Daria, Cory, and six grandchildren, also by his brother Don, who was one of the principals, and he'll be sorely missed. He was a very well-respected in our community, a resident of Granada Hills, and also a friend.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. Other tributes? Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, a member is a old dear friend of mine from Georgia, lived in California for many years, became a schoolteacher, educator. She died. Her name is Hortense Wong Sat, and she was about ninety-five, ninety-six, when she passed away, just a few days ago. Interesting story about the name Wong. As you know, many years ago, the Chinese would come from China, and they could not bring their wives or loved ones to the United States, prohibited from doing so in America at the time. And so they settled in Georgia, and there they had partners unlike themselves, they were mostly African-American. And Ms. Wong, and I learned about this last evening, her father was one such person, and her niece, Tolu, and a nephew, Charlie, I've known for years, they're the two surviving relatives. Very fine people, very involved in the community for many years, and got some good genetics there, and helped us along the way in many ways. And we're going to miss Hortense, very courageous woman.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other tributes? Mr. Zine.
I'd like to add on to Mr. Die. I was just with Don Die, his brother, recently at the school in my district on the Red Ribbon Week, and very good community supporters, please join in that one.
Other tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.